Notice has been advertised. Roll call, please. Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mrs. Maya, she's not here. Mrs. McColsky?
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Here.
Mrs. Sharon Celia?
Here.
Mrs. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Tabey?
Here.
Mr. Dulcous?
Here.
Mrs. Kayden?
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had no executive session this evening, so we're going to move to Section 3 before we go into our presentations. A motion to enter Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're going, we're going into Committee of the Whole so that during the presentations, folks can ask questions after each of them, and then we'll talk a little bit at the end. Well, I guess that's one of the presentations, it's just not on the agenda, about how to utilize the website to find information on the referendum. So those of us that are facing the projector are going to move to the side so that we are not blinded and so that everyone can see what's being projected. And then we'll have, both presentations are from Ms. Howell Turner, correct? So we will have the mentoring plan presentation and the On Course Curriculum Platform presentation.
All right, good evening. My name is Meredith Howell Turner. If I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you yet, I am the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Pleasure to be here, thank you for coming out tonight. I'm going to present on two topics today. The first is just a brief overview of our mentoring plan, which is how we welcome and support the newest members of our Collingswood and Oakland family schools. And then the second is I'm going to give a brief electronic tour of our new curriculum platform, On Course, so that families see how they'll be able to access and review the information that your kids are, kids are learning about every day. So two, two quick topics. Sorry for that weird angle that I'm standing and trying to speak to you. So just last week, we had the pleasure of welcoming 28 new staff members to Collingswood and Oakland. I'm going to be sharing some of the slides with you that we shared with those staff members in the last few days, so you get a sense of how they were greeted and, and what they were, what they were provided as part of their initial onboarding into our district, as well as some pictures, so you can get a sense of what the, what the vibe was like in the room. So there was a bit of a Ted Lasso theme. And full disclosure, this was before we knew that Season 4 was about to come out, so this was just good timing. And so this is how our staff were greeted warmly in the morning by our three fantastic mentoring leads. I'll shout them out now and you'll see their names again in a few moments. But Lauren Katz, Katie Balaban, and Chris Taylor just did a fantastic job, as I understand they have done for several years now, with this effort. We were partnered with and supported by our colleagues and friends at CEA, who provided breakfast and meals over the days and helped to welcome and orient our new staff members. And I don't know if you can see that well enough, so I'll just also kind of narrate as I step out of the way and talk really loud. If you look on the left, you can see some of the topics that we... There we go. You can see some of the topics that we covered to ensure that our newest staff got a warm, a warm welcome with both meeting their colleagues, meeting their building administrators and district administrators, but also getting some of the kind of technical logistical stuff out of the way that we know are always the questions when you start a new job, that kind of hold things up and slow you down. And so we wanted to frontload all of that as we were greeting folks this summer. And here are just a few quick photos, so you can see what the atmosphere is like. The photo on the left are, I think nearly all of our building administrators, as well as our district supervisors and many of our central office staff who came out to welcome our new team members. In the center is a picture, we had like a photo booth situation, so some of them gathered there. And then on the right, it's a bit hard to see, but that's Dr. McDowell at the front of the room welcoming and addressing, addressing the new staff members. And so again, many thanks to Lauren, Katie, and Christine, who did a terrific job with putting this together. This is just the beginning of a year-long mentorship program that's required by the state anytime you welcome new staff into your, into your district. And so they will be paired with a mentor teacher and supported throughout the year along the way in many, many different facets. But we wanted to first, of course, warmly welcome them, get them used to the, the climate and the culture of our districts and give them some of the information they need to have a strong start. We used lots of survey feedback at the end of the orientation days and that got lots of positive feedback about their experiences, oh, as well as additional questions that they had that we could answer even before they start with us next week. I will do this, listen, I'll do the second piece of the On Course and then we can come back together for questions if that works. All right, give me one second. Okay, the second thing I'm going to touch on tonight is, if you're here with us at a board meeting back in, I believe, May of last school year, we shared that our districts were going to be moving to a new curriculum platform called On Course. That's what you see here. For staff and families who are here with us, you may know that if you have tried to access our district curriculum currently, it's stored in a lot of different places and isn't the most user-friendly way to easily access the information that you want or need. And so we have been, over the course of from mid-May all the way through now, moving all of our curricular materials from the different places into one centrally organized curriculum platform called On Course. It has a family-facing component that will be live and accessible on our district website. And I'm going to give a very quick tour of how the information is organized so that staff and families can have a, have a sense of how easy it is to navigate and provide you with easy, quick access to the information that you might, might need if you are a parent or guardian, a family member supporting your child at home and want to have a sense of what they're up to each day during the year. So once families are logged in, and we'll provide you with the access code for how to do that. On the left-hand side, it might be small, but you see the information is organized by building grade levels, it says elementary, middle school, high school. There's some other information beneath and below that. For our purposes tonight, if you are an elementary parent who wanted to know what your child was up to in third grade math, perhaps, I'm using this as one example, you would be able to simply click into those files and have access to all of the units and modules and lessons and linked standards. I know I'm going through this quickly, but I'm just giving, giving a sense of how it's organized. If you were a secondary parent or guardian or family member who wanted to understand what was happening in, let's say, a high school social studies class. Similar, it's all the same sort of organization. You can, again, click into those simple dropdown hyperlinks and have access to all of the information that your child is learning at a given moment in time. And so this will be live and accessible. Our staff already have their access to, to this site. And for families, you soon will have access as well so that you can look to your, to your heart's content and reach out to your child's teachers, district administrators, or myself if you have further questions about what you're reading or how you can best support your child or family member at home. So I want to give a, a thank you and shout out to many summer curriculum writers who have been working to do the very painstaking, slow, laborious task of moving all this stuff from one place to another. And thanks to Windsor Yamamoto, who's been overseeing this process at the district level for us. So that is all from me for tonight, and I'll take any questions from anyone once we... Are, are you going to do your piece as well right now, or do questions first?
Why don't we break it up just a little bit? And so if there are questions for Ms. Howell Turner regarding either the mentoring plan or the On Course Curriculum Platform, why don't we talk through any of those now? And then we'll move to the second piece, just so we're not piling up questions.
Thank you for those presentations. Just a quick question about with this platform. I know one of the issues with where this was housed on the website before made it, there was a lot of times that it was either outdated or old information. Will this make it easier for folks to know when things need to be updated on our end, so that parents can go on there and make sure they have up-to-date curriculum?
Yeah, this is fully, you hear me? This is fully up-to-date with the current learning standards that are required for implementation this coming year. And so this is as current as it gets, if I understood your question correctly.
What would, what will the process be in the future for making sure that it is always that up-to-date?
Oh, in terms of ongoing maintenance? Sure, we will continue with our rolling, ongoing work that we do on an annual basis to make sure that curriculum updates occur on the cyclical schedule that they, that we follow. Not everyone is touched every single year, it's usually a multi-year exercise. But this year, through this conversion process, every piece is being reviewed. And so it will be as current as it gets this year. And then going forward, it will be that sort of rhythm and cycle that I was mentioning.
I have a question. Will parents have access through Genesis? Is there a special log-on for this? How, how is it going to be accessed?
I will be working with the tech team to make sure it is as seamless and easy as we can make it. I believe it will be linked straight to the district homepage, landing page. But I will work out those logistics with the tech team.
I have a question about some of the crosswalks that we've talked about in the past. Could you give us a sense of how parents can take a look at how the grade level, subject level curriculum intersect with some of the crosswalks that we've talked about regarding like culturally responsive pedagogy?
Sure, great question, and I'll show you in a second. When we did this conversion process from the other platforms here, we had the opportunity to update and kind of redesign the template that you're looking at right here. And so one of the things that we did in that process was just explicitly pull out the crosswalk as its own standalone, excuse me, standalone component. And so I'll, I'll scroll through in a second, and you'll, and you'll see. But we were able to just kind of, although it's infused throughout the curriculum, we wanted it to also be very obvious about how we were going about that piece. And so we made it its own standalone section. So, one second, pardon me. If anyone has any other questions while I'm bouncing around here, you can chime in. So if you, I know it may be, it's at the bottom, the interdisciplinary connections is the piece that Ms. Seltzer was just referring to here.
I didn't...
Hi.
I wanted to wait till you were, till you were, you were done. So going back to your, your presentation on the mentoring programs, you know, welcome to those 28 new staff members, absolutely. How do you feel, you know, very encouraging, 28 new people, but just in the face of a lot of the staff that we've lost over the past few months? How are things looking in terms of the new school year? Just in terms of teacher course loads and coverage of programming and things like that, please? Thank you.
Sure. We are in great shape in terms of teacher schedules. If you're, I don't know if you're asking like K-12 or secondary explicitly, but all staff were informed of their daily teacher schedule per their contract on August 15th. So staff have access to that currently and, and did as of a week ago. We continue, as we have in prior years, to operate within our contractual obligations. There are a small number of secondary staff who were asked if they were interested in teaching higher than their contractual low. That was an optional ask, and a few opted into doing so. And, and so overall, yes, we are able to roll out a strong student schedule with the Newbell schedule at the secondary level and feel excited to start the year in that, in that spirit.
Thank you.
Any other questions about these two presentations before we move on? Thank you very much, Ms. Howell Turner.
Sure thing, thank you.
And then Dr. McDowell, I think you're, you're going to take us through how we will, how can we find information about the referendum on the website?
Yes. So good evening, everybody. Please bear with me. So if you go to our district homepage, right on the homepage, we have a bond referendum 2024 link, which takes you directly to our district information. Everything from the presentations, the videos, information around regarding information sessions, fast facts, feedback from our referendum roundtables and so forth. In addition to having information in terms of frequently asked questions, in addition to the seniors tax-free reimbursement information, as well as the, a tax impact calculator. And so the way that this works is a resident or a homeowner is able to input their current assessed value and then calculate what the impact of the referendum would be on their local taxes and local fair share.
Before we turn this off and just sit back down, did anyone want to say anything more specifically about the website or where information can be found about the referendum?
Yeah, I was going to mention that depending on the size of your browser window, the bond referendum 2024 link might not show up directly up there. It might be under, like, it might say "more", and then you have to click on the "more" menu, and underneath it, it'll say "bond referendum 2024". So it just depends on the size of the window, it might not be. So if you don't see it, just click on the "more", "more" link.
Roger, do you mean when you're on the Collingswood homepage?
Yeah.
You might have to scroll in to find it.
Yeah, so it depends on if the, yeah, so it depends on if the resolution of your, of your browser screen. So, you know, and sometimes when that happens too, like the "about our district" section will be under the "more" section again. So if you don't see it, just click on "more" and you'll see the link.
Okay, so my suggestion is why don't we turn this off and then we can all come back and sit down and have, and finish the conversation in a less kind of all-over-the-place way? So just give us one second here. All right, there we go. So we had a few more things regarding some, some things around the referendum that have come up that we just wanted to be sure to clarify in this meeting before moving on. The first is that, and, and Dr. McDowell can probably speak a bit more to this because I know you were the one dealing with the Facebook account on Friday, but there was a, we did notice, so first of all, we have, this is a fairly standard thing, when a school district goes out for a bond referendum, that the, the architecture firm that has put the, the plans together, then also part of their, the, the package deal is that they put out information for us about the referendum. They took the videos, they did the, the drone footage, that sort of thing. And that is built into the cost once the referendum were to pass. So that is not coming out of our current school budget. So anyway, with that being said, a mistake was made with the media company. Would that be the right way to refer to them? Can you, can you kind of take that part from there? Thanks.
Yes. So the architectural firm is working with a media group that not only collects the video footage, puts the videos together, but they also focus on regional communication. And so they mistakenly connected some of the ads to one of the political action committees that are in town. And so there's multiple political action committees. So Collingswood Public Schools is not connected to any of the political action committees. These are concerned citizens on all sides of the issue that are expressing their voice in a very formal way. And so Friday, it was brought to my attention, I immediately reached out to the media group, requested that they remove anything that they had done in terms of advertising and then connect the future advertising to the school district website, which is what we just previewed. And they did that effective on Saturday. But it was brought to my attention that Thursday evening and Friday, they had connected it to the wrong landing pages.
Thank you. So, right, we wanted to acknowledge that that was a mistake that was made. We recognized the mistake and moved to correct it as soon as we could. Because yes, there is a separation between any political action committee and the school district. Moving on from that, though, did want to talk a little bit about process from the school district perspective, so that we are clear about how we got to where we are and then what we're doing moving forward. So just to kind of clarify once again how the, the referendum process worked was that you always have an ad hoc committee, or usually the process for, for these sorts of things with school boards is there is an ad hoc committee, meaning a committee that is separate from the full board, that comes together to discuss whatever topic is needed. Whether it be, in this case, it was a long-range facilities ad hoc committee that was discussing facilities needs. Sometimes we've had communications ad hoc committees to discuss the communication needs that, that arose through, in time. There, we've had an equity committee that was kind of an ad hoc situation as well. Anyway, there was a long-range facilities ad hoc committee that has been looking into what we can do in terms of upgrading facilities for a few years now. Once a more clear plan was put into place, the, the plan moved out of the committee itself to the full board. They were made aware of it. That's just the general nature of the way the structure of committees and the, the board works. So when issues are brought to the full or to the board, whether it be through letters that are sent, emails that are sent, they come through either a board email or through the business administrator. They're sent to the appropriate committee chair or head of that particular topic. And then the particular committee discusses what to do with that information. And then it gets forwarded to the full board once decisions or actions have been made. And that's exactly how all of this worked. One of the things that the ad hoc committee had asked of, asked was what is our ability as a school board once we have voted in the affirmative to go out for a referendum? Does the board then have an ability to advocate in favor of said referendum? And so we consulted our attorneys to make sure that we were all within our, our ethical duties. And the big issue is that we cannot spend school resources, so school funds, to advocate for or against a referendum. But as individual members of the community ourselves, we can certainly speak to what we think is positive about this or why we think it is something that folks should vote for because we are speaking on behalf of an affirmative action that the board took. So what that means is we voted yes to move forward with the referendum, so now we can speak for what we voted for. And I know that there's been a lot of talk about not, if not everyone agrees with something, is it okay for folks to talk about how they feel, whether they agree with it or don't agree with it? And the issue is, once the board votes in the affirmative or in the negative, that's the end of the discussion for those that don't agree either way. So another great example of that would be the SLO discussion. It was a pretty heated discussion, went back and forth a lot. Once the vote passed, it would have been inappropriate for any board members to publicly be speaking against the hiring of an SLO because that board voted in the affirmative to do it. So it's kind of the same idea here. You'll see on the agenda tonight, there's a resolution that just makes it clear what the board, what board members, excuse me, can do when it comes to advocating for a yes vote for this referendum. And I just wanted to be sure that we were kind of pointing all of that out during Committee of the Whole. And if anybody has anything to add from the board perspective, or Dr. McDowell or Ms. Coleman, they can certainly feel free. All right, then, cool.
Wait, sorry. I had a clarification about, going back to what you said in the beginning with funding. So you specify that when it's, when, so when an advertisement for the referendum says "paid for by Collingswood School District", that is money that is, I think, maybe the term was "soft costs" that was quoted, and then that is rolled into the cost of the bond referendum? So that's what that means when it says "paid for by the Collingswood School District"?
So you're referring to when, I've only seen a screenshot because I'm not on Facebook myself, but I think what it says, because of the way Facebook works, when, when somebody has a page, it says "paid for by", and it says "Collingswood Schools", right? Roger, I know you've been kind of looking into this. Can you explain what, how that all works? And that we had to give access to the media company to utilize our Facebook page, or it wouldn't be coming through our Facebook page. And in order for them to do that, they had to use their funds to, but through our account, to pay for it. Does that make sense? Okay. So I think that is why unfortunately it comes up saying "paid for by Collingswood Schools", because it's paid for through, because it's, it's being posted on the Collingswood Public Schools account, Facebook account, or Instagram account, I would assume. But the costs are coming from the media group that is hired by the architectural firm.
Yeah, to, to date, the only thing that has come across my desk that I've authorized is the, just the ads in their retrospect, where we're just reminding people that there's a vote coming on September 17th. That's the only thing that's come through, through me.
For that one, the ad, sorry, that was too loud. For that one, the ad does not specify vote yes or no. It's just reminding folks that a vote is happening on September 17th, and that's why it's okay to use school funds for it. Right, okay.
Yeah, and I think it probably would be good if we can look into whether or not Facebook lets us change that wording, because again, it's not paid for by the school district. It is one of those interesting things, because I remember last year at the New Jersey School Board Association's conference, they had, there was a really informative session on bond referendums that I got to attend. And this is, I mean, this is the, the common practice. I think Cherry Hill School District was presenting then, and they had passed like the, I think, the most, the biggest, yeah, bond referendum in state history. I can't remember how much, like 300 something million, I think? I, I don't know how much, but huge. And I think Garrison Architects were, were also the, the architects then. And so it's pretty standard practice that basically they, as the, the company, have decided to use the, some of their fees to pay for marketing for their plan. And so, again, I think it'd probably be nice if we can see if there's a way in Facebook to, to change it, so it says "paid for by", you know, them or whatever, but that, that's where the funding's coming from.
I just had to clarify. Whoops. So I'm reading this resolution that we're, we're going to vote on tonight. So if we have any questions about what we are going to talk to the public about, we have authority to go directly to the solicitor and maybe copy the board? I just want to make sure that if I'm going to do something affirmative, that it's within the ethical bounds of both what we're usually bound with by and this resolution.
So if you want to check to see if what, whatever action it is that you would like to take is within the bounds of what the resolution says, I would send that email to myself and Dr. McDowell and Ms. Coleman, and we will pass it on to the, the board attorney to check in with that. So he's not being inundated with too many emails.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we move on? All right.
I do have, sorry. I want to make sure to hit my microphone. So just a question about the timeline. So, so what you're saying is that once the board voted in the affirmative to send the question to the county, then the board, so at that point, did the board have a right to speak affirmatively, like board members in public? Or is it only with the passage of this referendum that, that I... Or is it only with the passage of this referendum that, that, I, because obviously with stipulations, because I was reading all the literature from the scores association and from the solicitor, so New Jersey state, you know, ethics laws and, you know, court precedent and things like that, have stipulated that board members have to say that they're private citizens, which many board members have done. So that's, that's all covered within that. But then when it comes to, but then passing this resolution will, will then supersede those court rulings? Or, because, you know what I mean? So I was reading all of the, all of the literature, and I just want to make sure I understand. So, so the court rulings have said that board members cannot speak as board members?
Is it court rulings or school ethics commission rulings? Because that's two different things.
Well, it was both. In the, in the information from the solicitor, there were a number of cases that were cited, New Jersey Supreme Court cases, things like that, and then also the ethics laws. So, so with the passage of this resolution at our local level, that then supersedes those case rulings?
It's clarifying that, because we know folks have had questions about whether this, what board members are allowed or not allowed to do when it comes to advocating for a referendum that they've put out and said, you know, we think this could be good for schools. So it was suggested by our attorney that to kind of clarify things and make it clear that we were not doing anything that was outside of the bounds of what the school ethics law says, this resolution shows that we are working within those bounds.
Thank you. Because normally, we're not allowed to speak on behalf of the board in anything other than our private capacity. So this is just giving us that right for this particular circumstance?
Right.
Okay.
Motion to exit Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving, we already had presentations, so moving to Section Five, Future Dates and Miscellaneous Information, please take note of all of the back-to-school night dates and times. Also, two things that weren't on there, where we do have two more referendum roundtable discussions. One is tomorrow, the twenty-seventh, from seven to eight-thirty, held at Perkins. And the other is next Tuesday, September third, same time, seven to eight-thirty, but at the Community Center. So just wanted to make sure that folks knew about that as well. And obviously, take note that Tuesday, September seventeenth, is when we would be voting on the bond referendum, and the twenty-third is our next board meeting. Moving on to Section Six, Routine Business. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four regular board meeting and the July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four bond referendum meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Just say, yeah.
Well, Beth Anna doesn't say that there. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are at our first opportunity for public comment. I'm going to say this first before I forget, because the tech folks have been working on making sure that everyone can hear everything that's being said, so that's why we're talking into our mics a little more closely. But one of the things that folks have said, listening at home, was that when people come up to talk into the mic, just talk with your regular voice, you don't need to use a teacher voice or a really loud voice, because I guess that creates some kind of feedback and makes it hard for folks to hear at home. So just, you've got a microphone, so you can just talk regularly, and everybody will hear you. Now I will read my statement. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to give feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes, that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators, or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a strict three-minute time limit, and Ms. Coleman will be, have her phone timer on, so you'll hear it start to ring. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And there we go. Kim, do you want to move the mic down a little bit?
Hi, my name is Zora Seven. I live at twelve, at five twelve Froneman Avenue in Collingswood. I'm an incoming senior at Collingswood High School. I'm in a class on the field hockey and basketball teams. I take a part of, in the first place, I have worked hard to get to this point. This summer, I applied to four-year college program. Since I work in a new curriculum platform, I thought it'd be a good time to inform the share of my experience with the teaching electives. Because of lack of hands-on electives, studies show that disability are more affected. I first chose my electives as a junior in March. Then I was told they had been canceled. At Pritikin, my case manager said they were appropriate for students with IEP. The other students with IEP have never been successful in them. There are the few things wrong with that. But what I was speculating for, if my IEP is being followed, is me, assumptions are being made that cannot succeed. I expect it to be set higher for me, everyone with a disability. There are only enhanced electives I could take a begin with. Studies show that hands-on learning is better for everyone, but can those who are made hard to learn. It is less than two weeks before my senior year. I have no idea what the difference I will have. I worked, we have the past three years, I've taken most of the crap classes that, so that in my senior year, I could take classes that would help me know what to do, what I want to do in college, or try to discuss something new. Unfortunately, I fear opportunities are available to me than my peers, just because I have doubts about them. I ask you to look closer at offerings and consider adding enhanced electives back in. I also would benefit from them and can learn together instead of a secondary classroom. Lastly, I want to add that I want you to work harder in inclusion. Inclusion, inclusion is less than a classroom, it's a massive example that comes here from the top. Give us our opportunities, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Rebecca Finkel, nine-one-six Park Ave.
Ms. Finkel, I'm sorry, I think you actually do need to speak a little bit louder into the microphone. Now I've made everyone overcorrect, I apologize.
No, it's fine. Does this work? Excellent, thank you. I have recently been made aware, through reporting in NJ Penn and campaign finance disclosures, that the mayor of Collingswood has become an active opponent of the referendum. Ethical concerns have been raised, and I hope that they are thoroughly investigated by those more qualified. Tonight, I want to talk about it from the perspective of a Collingswood School District parent. I have lived here for ten years. That may be short in Collingswood time, but for many new residents, ten years without seeing meaningful investment in our schools is like a lifetime. In our case, it's been twenty years. And what irks me about this recent activity by the borough, by their attempt to rob us of a chance to even vote to improve our schools, is the increasingly obvious need. Just this year, we have been in the Enquirer multiple times due to racist incidents by students and staff. Board member Roger Chu published a letter to the editor in the retrospect detailing the academic inequities that hurt economically disadvantaged students year after year, regardless of Title I funding, and how that data clearly indicated the need for structural change. CPAG gave a presentation to the board showing how far we are from being an inclusive district. The referendum addresses all three of these urgent needs, and to read that our town is blocking it is deeply troubling. I'll add one more need that is not as high of a priority as the ones I listed, but it represents a broken promise from our mayor, and I think illustrates why he should stay far away from this issue until his own house is in order. This summer, we were supposed to be presented with a plan for the rec program. They, and, you know, we, paid a consultant in twenty-twenty-two. The community was surveyed, and we've heard nothing since. It's currently fall twenty-twenty-four, and many of us parent volunteers are gearing up for the upcoming year. And once again, it's kind of an open secret that the rec program has no indoor space. Program activities are often hosted in people's homes. This is deeply problematic for the obvious reasons, but this year, when we are all finally facing so many of Collingswood's disparities, it's important to point out that hosting rec activities in homes excludes people who just don't have the space. This is yet another problem that the referendum solves, and many of us would appreciate if the borough would either offer their own plan or get out of the way. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea Haynes, and I'm a resident at two forty-eight East Night Ave. I have two children in the district, a rising seventh grader and a rising ninth grader, and I'm also a member of the CMSPTA board. While tonight's agenda is lengthy, there were a few things that stood out that I felt...
I'm so sorry, Ms. Haynes, I really feel like I screwed everyone up. It's Ms. Coleman's fault as well. So everybody just talk regularly.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever you did before was clearly working better, so I'm so sorry. Just go ahead.
All right, is that better? Okay. While tonight's agenda is lengthy, there were a few things that stood out that I felt needed additional clarification. First, the resolution authorizing the board to advocate for the referendum. Board members have already been actively advocating, including letters to the editor in the retrospect. Does this resolution imply that until approval tonight, all advocating has been done in poor faith or out of compliance? Second, at the end of last school year, there was a significant amount of staff reduced due to major deficits in the budget. While looking at the list of new hires, most of these individuals seem to be starting pretty high on the salary, the teacher salary guide, like step P, which is currently on top. While I'm certainly not diminishing the value of new teachers entering our district, I'm just wondering how we are able to afford such salaries, especially when we couldn't afford teachers at the bottom of the scale at the end of last school year. There are many concerns across the entire agenda when it comes to spending money, especially when there is still an unsettled teacher contract to start this school year. How much money is being spent on funding the referendum passing, as well as the special election being held for the referendum vote? I urge you to take a closer look at how money is being spent across the district that isn't directly benefiting our students and staff. Thank you.
Let me give this a shot. Is it good? We're good? Okay. Luchopalazzo, four oh seven Sloan Avenue. I didn't really prepare comments, so I'm just going to go ad hoc here. I believe that one of the main topics of tonight's evening is transparency and trust with the board and with the community. So it seems like we've gotten ourselves into a position where there is a lot of back and forth, and just a general lack of trust coming from both ends. So I know that just this morning, my wife and I were discussing, we were a little bit upset, because we found out that our rising third grader's teacher, Mr. Raider, was being transferred to another school. So we found this out ten days before the start of the school year. Now, he's been replaced by a very good teacher in their own right, so that is great. However, I believe that this sort of, kind of underlines this lack of trust that some of the community currently has with the board and the district. So I'm also somewhat concerned about the resolution tonight that is being passed, or that is being voted on. You mentioned earlier that it was going to be acceptable for school board members to come out in the affirmative in favor of the referendum. However, unless I misinterpreted that, it seemed as if those who were maybe, that objected to elements of it, wouldn't be able to speak out. I also believe that there's, and I'm not at all a student in these things at this point, in fact, before this referendum was on my radar, I never came to a board meeting. I'm very glad to be here, because I'm finding that I really like the grassroots democracy thing. But I am very, very concerned that there could be ethical issues that are raised within the board itself. So what I'm asking is that those who are in favor and opposed are able to speak their mind as private citizens, as well as other members of the community, such as the mayor. You know, in short, what I would like to see is, I would like to see a lot more transparency, a lot more trust. I do believe that this referendum is going to have a hard time passing September seventeenth, and hopefully that we can bridge the gap and start to come up with real solutions for our kids as soon as September eighteenth. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. Dave Routen, nine zero three Park Avenue. Few people already discussed the resolution. I'm curious from the board, I know you spoke, you said you spoke to the board attorney. You know, the resolution seems to very specifically ignore Advisory Opinion A zero three dash zero seven, which specifically says that board members are not allowed to advocate in public for anything including bond referendums. They cannot speak on behalf of the board, et cetera. So I'm curious where this guidance came from. If you, if there is updated guidance, I'm sure the public would be very interested in hearing it or seeing it. You know, beyond that, there's some additional language. Certainly, there's no problem in a board member advocating it for it as an individual, not on behalf of the board. The board member is allowed to say they're a board member, but they must also then follow up and say that they are not speaking on behalf of the board. So that's where we are. If there is some additional guidance that you received from either council or the School Ethics Committee, I'm sure it would all be interested. Thank you.
Hi, Rebecca Sieg, ten thirty Grant Ave. And this will be brief, because I also did not prepare remarks tonight, but would just encourage the board for a little bit more transparency around the resolution after this evening. The last we'd heard on this and had heard for months was, we cannot advocate, we are just giving information, that is the role of the board. We heard that at the initial presentation, at the FAQ sessions thereafter, without any caveat saying, except when this goes to the county. That was never said. So the last several weeks, we've had board members with signs in their yard, we had a promotional video out there, without that additional context that it's allowable to do, based on what I've heard tonight, after the wording of the referendum goes to the county after that vote. So what I would encourage is that, while I like to believe many people are sitting at home listening to this, and will listen to it tomorrow, to be very transparent publicly about that, because I do believe the last several weeks have further eroded trust in the process for this referendum, and this is something that, if allowable, could easily be gotten in front of at this point. My other question is that, heard loud and clear that the media that's happening and the advertisements are being paid for by the board architecture group, what I would be curious about is, in the event that the referendum does not pass, who then foots the bill for all of that work that's happened? Is that something that's happened with the architects as a goodwill measure to try to get this passed, or is that something that we will be on the hook for out of our budget if this happens to not pass? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tom Howard, I live at sixteen Fraser Avenue. I am obviously a resident of Collingswood, also a public school teacher, not in Collingswood. And I happen to notice, again, unfortunately, there are a number of resignations on tonight's agenda, and going into the school year, that's concerning, considering the number of losses we've had in recent years, or recent year or so. And I can tell you that, that, again, and I've said this before, as a teacher, usually teachers don't leave because they have some golden opportunity somewhere else, and it's just like this once-in-a-lifetime chance to depart for greener pastures financially. It's usually something that they're reluctant to do because of the connections and because of the relationships they've built with their students, with their fellow staff members. So to me, it seems with all of the departures we've had, that there needs to be a real serious look, again, about why this is happening. And I can also tell you, as a teacher, something that certainly doesn't help is the fact that you're going into the school year without a settled contract with the, with the, with the union, because the longer that persists... the longer that persists, the more demoralized people are going to feel. I mean, I've been through it myself, going through a year-plus, working without a contract. And it was just, I mean, it was eroding, I can't think of the best word, corrosive, horrible to morale and everything. And this is not something that is good for a district that has struggled to retain teachers in recent years. So, I really encourage you guys to make a serious effort to settle the contract, and also do so without putting articles in the newspaper, essentially not so subtly blaming the union for the issues. They're, you know, and I know a lot of people on the Board like to tout their progressive credentials, and I applaud the Board for a lot of measures that do line up with so-called progressivism, such as the focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is a super-important work. But you know what also is progressive is supporting labor, it's supporting unions, supporting workers, and by doing things like that, you're sending the opposite message, and you're saying, "You're not really that progressive that way." So, try to find it in your way to make some road, inroads with the staff, so that we don't have this continual list of resignations every single board meeting. Thank you.
Hi, Trey Ramsburg, 32 East Coltsor Avenue, Collingswood. Members of the Board, Dr. McDowell, I'm not speaking today as a representative of Collingswood District students, but as one. I've met each of you, and I know you to care about our future, and if I have any kind of reputation, it's not as somebody who doesn't care about the school district. As a student, I am troubled, to say the least, by what I see as a misalignment of priorities on the part of the Board. I don't believe I'm alone in being less than entirely enthusiastic about the proposed renovations to the stadium space and updates to the elementary school system. I, for one, would love to see the kinds of reforms proposed to the elementary schools, but it appears underdeveloped, and it's disquieting to see this reform tied inexorably to the less necessary project of building the best and biggest sports complex in Miles. I am well aware that the laws which allow us to raise taxes for new renovations don't allow us to do the same for pre-existing costs without extensive appeals, but somehow that doesn't make me feel any less uneasy about supporting massive spending on this project while our ever-smaller population of veteran teachers is set to operate without a union contract. At the heart of this, I think, is that many of us see all the issues, especially with staff relations the Board seems to be ineffectual in the face of solving, and wonder why this proposal has been the grand project of this administration. The purpose of taxes in a representative government is to fairly pay your share for the good of the community, and I think most taxpayers would, instead of having the best football stadium, rather make sure the football coaches are paid fairly. Our interests with a school are with its teachers, and I would have preferred the Board spent all its efforts on squaring out a deal with them than working out plans for a state-of-the-art outdoor pickleball court. I'm just, I am just young enough to not be able to vote in the referendum, but it would not come as a shock to me if it proved unpopular.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Connor McDonough. I'm at 711 Collings Avenue. First off, relatively new to Collingswood. As you guys all know, Collingswood does have a great reputation. I moved here a little over a year ago, really excited to be part of this progressive town, this, you know, exciting. There's a lot of youth here, there's a lot of compassion. So, recently, only recently got involved since then with some of the Board activities. But in the past, I've had the fortunate opportunity to sit in on a lot of the Board of Education, State Board of Education trainings that you all have. And really, the biggest thing I've kind of taken away from tonight's measure, where you're looking to reassure that you are working within what the Board Solicitor has recommended, and I believe that, I do believe that you are doing what is legally permissible. What I'm really concerned about is that those are kind of going against those ethical concerns that the State Board has really always hammered home of, be sure that as a private citizen, you're not compromising that trust and integrity in the Board. So, I understand that the Board's decision tonight will be looking towards what is legally permissible for you all speaking as private citizens, but as others have talked about, that trust is really, seemed to be eroding away over the past, especially six months with the Board referendum, and I think this kind of movement is going to only hurt that, whether it's after this referendum and for other things to come. Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Dwyer. I live at corner of McGillan, Virginia. And I have three children. They went to Newbie, and some of them went to middle school, and one daughter went to high school. And I've lived in Collingswood for forty-some-odd years, and to tell you the truth, I'm ashamed that this Board is representing me. I'm totally, totally shamed. And I think that your continuing marginalization of the Sharp neighborhood, the whole neighborhood, you've picked out Sharp, and I don't know, you all say DEI or DIE is the way to go, and you're not anywhere near close to taking that vow, okay? All right? And I guess I could just blame the three of you that wrote in the newspaper in the retrospect, okay? But I guess I'm gonna blame the whole Board, okay? That it's disgusting, it's irritating, it's racist, it's marginalizing, it's, it's just, it's crazy, just absolutely crazy, and you have absolutely no answers to any of the questions that have been asked in the retrospect. You didn't have the, you didn't have the forethought to even have an appraisal of the Garfield School, so you'd know how much you're gonna give into that, okay? After you close it, the Sharp School, you know? I can't speak, okay? You're just terrible people.
Hi. Not using my teacher voice. I am Alexandra Guido Smith, 311. Use my teacher voice. Okay. I'm Alexandra Guido Smith, 311, Lakeview Drive. As a majority of you here are volunteer officials, I would like to thank you for the effort that you put in every day for our children, for the referendum that you have put forth, for the time and energy that it takes to sit there and listen to people who do not listen to the things that you are saying, who do not acknowledge the things that you have said repeatedly. I go to every meeting, I'm here, I've come to a number of the roundtables. I've heard you say that the architect pays for the promotional stuff. I knew that, because you said it, and I heard you say it. You don't have to tell me 12 times. I'm also working without a contract, as I have before. In my district, every single one of our non-tenure teachers was let go. My intervention partner that was with me for 18 years got put back in a kindergarten classroom because the state is cutting funding everywhere. My district has pay-to-play for all the sports. There is no money. My husband and I have budgeted without me getting a raise, because I don't expect that my contract is gonna get settled, because I don't know where they're gonna get the money from. You all are in an unthinkable spot that I honestly, I am very glad that it is not you, that it is you and not me, because there's no way that I could. But I thank you for what you are doing, for putting forth, and getting, for putting forth a referendum that will put our children together, that will provide opportunities for inclusive practices in inclusive situations that does not exist now, for a four and five building that every single one of these kids and those teachers deserve to work in. Thank you.
Lee Troutman, 104 East Madison Avenue. In reference to several items that you've presented already, the Board's tax impact calculator will actually not give you what you're going to be paying as an increase, because when the town comes up with the new assessments, that is actually what you will be paying your taxes on. So, like, I calculated mine using yours, and my taxes are going to go up $868 a year, every year, for as long as I live here, because I'll be dead before the bond actually gets paid off. That's one thing. Second thing, in terms of what board members can and cannot do, you can put signs on, the mayor can advocate or not advocate for the Board, as long as he identifies himself as speaking as a private citizen in the same way that you can, where you can advocate for the bond, or you can advocate against it. Actually, it was Mr. Chu's letter which made me get more interested in this, because as a board member years ago, we faced the same thing, and then had to live within specific guidelines for what the board members could or couldn't do. And then I found on your agenda the idea that you are going to try to pass a resolution where board members can, as board members, speak on behalf. So, today, I sent a message to the county superintendent. Ms. Abil from the superintendent's office was kind enough to get back to me, provided me with several cases, statutes, et cetera, where these types of things had taken place already. But the link she connected me to for a New Jersey School Board's advisory ends with, "The key takeaway for Board and their members: When pursuing a bond referendum, the most important guideline for board members to remember is that providing objective information about the potential benefits and disadvantages of a proposed bond referendum is almost always legal. However, board members must be careful not to use their official positions to convince school district residents to vote yes or no." If you go on and pass this, and I would actually advise you to table the issue, go back to the Board Attorney, have them send it to the state, and find out that way. But if you do this, legal action will follow, because specifically, New Jersey School Board says you can't do it. So, I would please take that under advisement. And finally, getting to transparency, I attended one of the political action meetings last week, was interested to hear from people who had actually spoken individually to the superintendent about some of their concerns from the Sharp area, and it just surprised me to hear things like, "Well, we're gonna propose keeping the board offices at St. John's, but once the state has approved it, we're gonna move them to Sharp. Classroom size is not gonna be capped, three teachers in a classroom..."
Thank you, Mr. Gentman.
"...and students will teach other students." Hmm.
So, I have, oh, I am speaking, it is, I think it's this thing. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Adrian Earl, 409 Comley. I have a totally different topic, I think, is a pretty simple question about the back-to-school night dates. So, they're organized differently this year than they have been in the previous two school years, prior to when it was virtual after COVID. The previous two school years, and that's like since I've had kids in the district, really, and gone to these, it was every single school had a different night, and pre-K had its own night for back-to-school night as well, and I see that they're kind of doubled up this year, and at different times. So, like, if you happen to have a kid at Garfield, anything, which could happen, I guess, there are different times, so that you could make both presumably. I was wondering if, in the previous years, like, last year at Sharp, it was on the Sharp back-to-school night was its own date, but there were like two times. So, there was like a 6:30 session and a 7 o'clock session, I assume so that you could go, right, when you have siblings, at least if you had two kids, if you have more, you gotta figure it out, right? But like, so you can make it to two different ones. I was wondering if that's gonna happen this year, because, so, and it's not to say it's about me, but just for example, so this year, I have a pre-K and a second grader at Sharp, and it looks like Sharp is pre-K through 5 one night. So, like, on that Thursday, September 12th, at 7, is it gonna be like a 7 o'clock, can I go to pre-K, and then 7:30, can I go to the second grade session? Or do we just have to try to like split up? Sorry. So, that was my question, I thought maybe it was pretty simple, but I wasn't sure, and I apologize that I didn't reach out directly to the teacher, because it looked like, it kind of just came to mind here and now, and it looks like it's across the Board. It would be maybe a helpful question for like people from all different schools to know the answer to. That's it.
Thank you, everyone. I wanna clarify a few things, or take the time to clarify a few things. First, I wanted to thank Ms. Sullivan for coming up and sharing her perspective and reminding us all to do better. That was a great way to start public comment, so thank you for that. Just because it's the last thing that was said, and it's on my mind, Ms. Howell Turner, could you clarify for folks for back-to-school nights? Would there be the, I seem to remember in the past, because I've had the same issue with two kids in a school, that it's like a 6 to 6:30, and then a 6:30 to 7 session, so you can switch and go to, is that what we should expect?
Thank you for the question, yes. And we worked with all of our building administrators to craft a schedule that staggers the times in the way you were describing, with as little double booking as possible, and so further guidance will come out from your school level about how you'll be able to get into all of your classrooms, to visit multiple classrooms, in addition to whole group sessions at the kickoff, as I believe is usually the case, where the building principal administrators will share out building-wide updates, and then families will move into individual classrooms in a rotational manner, so that all, you know, families who have multiple children can visit multiple classrooms. And so, we worked on this schedule in conjunction with the building administrators to allow for that to happen. So, I hope that answers your question, and I'll be happy to follow up with you separately if you have other questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Howell Turner. And then just to clarify a few things that came up regarding the resolution that's on the agenda, advocating as community members, and just some referendum issues in general, I'm gonna see if I can remember all of them, and maybe check in with Dr. McDowell or Ms. Coleman if there's anything that I have missed. The first part about the resolution is, we had our Board Attorneys go through and do what it sounds like some folks in town did as well, and check through case law and school ethics rules. So, we believe that we are not doing anything that's outside of the bounds with that, and just to be very crystal clear about what's happened thus far, unless something has happened on Facebook that all of us are unaware of, no board member has done anything without the caveat that they are speaking as an individual citizen, making sure folks know that they are board members, but they are speaking as individual citizens, as is our right. And that, also to clarify, and as I said, this was, this came up in actually the last referendum, as well as just in various issues, when it's gonna happen, that not all board members are going to agree on various decisions that are made. Once something is voted on, however, the Board, people as board members, whether it is at the Board table or speaking publicly in some forum, so that might be publicly on social media, or it might be publicly in a public session that's not a specific board meeting, it's not appropriate for board members to speak against something that the Board has agreed to. They could personally disagree with it, and that's fine, but if they're speaking in a public forum, they need to just not be speaking then. That's not a silencing thing, and I mean, they can choose to anyway, but they are risking a school ethics violation if they're doing it. I don't think anybody's doing that, but just to clarify kind of what some of the folks were, I think, getting at. It's, when a Board goes out for a referendum, and they have voted, the majority of us have voted that we think it's a good idea to give it a try and let the community decide, it is allowable for us to be clear that these are the things we think... these are the things we think are good about the plan. That just kind of makes sense that if we didn't think it was a good plan, we probably wouldn't have all, a majority of us wouldn't have voted for it. So I'm not quite sure that I fully understand why that would be something that would be surprising to folks. We're not using public resources to send out mailers as individual citizens saying that. But folks can speak on what they believe so long as they're doing it within the realm of the school ethics laws. I don't know if there's anything more you want to add to that particular point? And then what was my other one that I wanted to have you speak to, which was? I don't know. So say that one first, and if I remember it, I'll let you know.
So, thank you. So just a few things. I'm actually going to, I'm just going to go into what, based on what we heard. And so I want to be very clear. Bond referendums are really about the future. And the future requires two things. It requires flexibility and it requires a level of planning and preparation based on the rules, the laws in which you are governed and the resources that are available. And so is what is being proposed sunshine and rainbows? No, it is not. Is what is being proposed a solid cohesive plan as promised on September 12th of 2022, when we came out publicly to the community specifically referencing many of the challenges that have been communicated, both small and large by our community, loud and clear? It was further reiterated during the Vision 2026 Plan, which even individuals that have, that are within their legal right to communicate that they are against have come out and said very clearly, they fully support the goals and the objectives of the vision. They don't like the process. So the process is the process. And so what I believe is extremely important is that the school district are governed by rules and laws from the state that are very specific. And so as a district, our task was to come back to the community as promised with a cohesive proposal based on the resources that were available, based on the options that were presented to us and our capacity to be able to fund and to deliver what the community has asked for. And so this is a solid first step moving in that general direction. And so I would encourage the information that is housed on our district website to be the information that we refer to. The conversations that we have learned in our small group sessions in our roundtable meetings have really helped us to think more cohesively about some of the things that were not considered in the development of the proposal. Hence the reason why we came out six months in advance when the state says you go out 60 days. And so we knew that this was going to be a transformational conversation over many, many months. But based on the tremendous amount of participation, feedback, energy among our community members on all sides of every issue, it was important for us to come out with this information. And so I will continue to share. My responsibility as superintendent is to serve the children and families within this community. Those who are for what we're proposing, those who are not for. It is not for me to decide. It is for the community to decide how we best support our young people. And finally, what I would say is that the continued misunderstanding, misinterpretation, or conflation of the issues as they relate to equity, as it relates to access, as it relates to longstanding disparities, as it relates to lack of inclusive opportunities that we heard from Ms. Sullivan this evening, all of those core things that we as community members, and I say "we" because I live here too. I have two children who go to school in Collingswood. I pay the same taxes as everybody else. I have the same fears as everyone else for my children and whom I love. But I also love and care for the 2,500 other children that I'm also responsible for without casting value judgments on who they are, what they think, who they love, or what they believe, who they pray to or who they do not. Our responsibility is to put the best possible option forward for the children and the families that we serve with the resources that we have available. And I will be very clear, it is not easy. These are very challenging discussions. And I strongly encourage every member within our community, no matter where you sit with this issue, look at the information, make the best informed decision for your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Moving on to Section 8, the superintendent's report. Dr. McDowell will speak.
And so a few items that we just wanted to share while we're here. And so just to further reiterate, the bond referendum website houses all of the district information as it relates to the referendum, as it relates with specifications, as it relates with the finance. We do have an upcoming event tomorrow at the Perkins Center for the Arts from 7:00 to 8:30. Information was sent out last week and reminders were also sent first thing this morning. Please sign up and register so that we can plan. These are smaller, more intimate conversations with 25 to 30 community members and residents so that we can have real engaging conversations about the future. I'd also like to send out a reminder that the special election is on September 17th. Polls open at 6:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. Voters can mail their ballots, but they must be postmarked on or before September 17th. Another option for voters is to drop off their ballots in the election boxes, either at Collingswood Borough Hall or Gloucester Township. Voters can also hand-deliver their ballot to the Board of Elections Office located at 100 University Court in Blackwood, New Jersey. Please be advised that the Camden County Clerk's Office does not receive or count mail-in ballots. I'd also like to continue to reiterate, because a lot of things happen at the end of the year. On June 17th this year, we were excited to wrap up the 2324 school year with our 185 graduates from the class of 2024. And so this special group of young people were awarded over $5.1 million in academic scholarships. It's one of them being the first and only Gates Foundation Scholarship awarded to a Collingswood High School graduate. Out of 53,000 applicants across the country, a Collingswood High School graduate received an all-expenses college education based on the tremendous efforts of the faculty, staff, and community here in this school. I'd also like to recognize the outstanding performance of our valedictorian, Micah Anger, who is attending Dartmouth in the fall, and salutatorian Wesley Wilcox, who will attend the University of Vermont. We'd also like to honor and recognize the 35 of the 185 National Honor Society graduates and their classmates who were accepted into some of the most prestigious colleges and universities in the country. Our marching band was a top 10 finalist in the Atlantic Coast Championship and the indoor percussion ensemble placed third at the Atlantic Coast Championships. We also had our PAWS TV leaders receive Emmy Awards for Outstanding Talent, Outstanding News Anchor, and Outstanding Holiday Shows. Student leaders in PAWS TV also received Emmy nominations for producing Good Morning Collingswood News Magazine and the documentaries Panthers Ignite, Panther Football Culture, and Odyssey of the Mind. In addition to our high school students winning first place at the Camden County Teen Arts Festival, and they were honored at the 10-Day Film Festival, this is who our students are. Our student athletes, despite the good, the bad, the challenges associated with our athletic and recreational facilities, no matter where you fall within that spectrum or continuum. Our student athletes were honored this year, including boys' baseball conference champions, girls' lacrosse conference champions, and our girls' soccer team won the Jim Black Sportmanship Award. We had student athletes break school records and earn individual state championships, both in football as well as track and field. Our students were also recognized as All-Stars in the Colonial Conference, the South Jersey Interstate Swim League, the South Jersey Interstate Lacrosse League, and the Burlington County Sports League. This is who our high school students are. Last week, we sent out back-to-school information. We are excited to welcome our students and staff back on Thursday, September 5th. As was previously stated, we will continue to send out information, both at the district level, but specifically at your child's school level as we prepare for a successful welcoming of students and a start, a strong start to the 2425 school year. Last week, we also welcomed the next generation of 28 talented educators during our new staff orientation. 18 new staff and 10 psychology and social work interns. We're extremely excited to add these professionals to our team and we look forward to another great school year. Special thanks again to our phenomenal induction coordinators, Ms. Ballaband, Ms. Katz, and Ms. Taylor. Wanted to give you a quick update on preschool and kindergarten enrollment. And so as of today, pre-K enrollment for both general education and preschool disabled students is 196 of the 300 students who qualify in Collingswood, with our stated goal, which will continue to be to ensure that we continue to grow each and every year so that Collingswood families have access to free, high-quality early childhood education. Our preschool program currently has a waitlist of 49 students. The registration team is continuing to work with the child study team to place students in the process of eligibility and will continue to invite students from the waitlist once seats become available. Kindergarten enrollment currently has 120 general education students and students with IEPs in general education settings. This does not include students currently in self-contained classrooms. We currently have seats still available at Newby, Sharp, and Tatum. We currently have students on the waitlist at Zane. Through our New Jersey Preschool Expansion Program, Collingswood was approved to increase its preschool capacity. During the June 24th public meeting, the Board of Education approved the district to move forward with a five-year lease at the Parkview property. And so the CAWS at Parkview preschool program will be a new partnership which will allow the district to expand up to 60 additional high-quality preschool seats for Collingswood families. Additional details around site launch, date, and registration will be released in the near future once construction is underway and project completion is... The project completion date is established. In May, the Board of Education revised its policy allowing students grades three through 12 to bike to school. Bike racks have been purchased for our elementary schools and are currently in the process of being installed. Policy 5514 is the policy I'm referring, where it talks about student use of vehicles on campus. Since then, Mr. Jefferson, our Director of Culture and Climate, has been working with the New Jersey Chapter of Safe Riders to Schools and are working to develop a plan to integrate safety protocols suggested for our new riders. Additionally, the district is in the initial planning phases of bicycle safety assemblies to be conducted within all of our schools. Please stay tuned. I would also be remiss in not giving a... They call it giving them their flowers. We need to give them more than their flowers. Our technology services team, last year, one of our district priorities was to support the enhancement of our infrastructure specifically by updating technology services. We sought to improve our Chromebook deployment and address workflow and customer service concerns to schools. And we wanted to reinforce our cybersecurity and data protection protocols. And so when we go back and we look at 2324 year in review, in the area of customer service, our technology services team resolved 7,039 tickets between July of 2023 and July of 2024 with an average resolution time of within 24 hours. In terms of technical assistance, in preparation for this year, this summer, our technology services team constructed 40 Chromebook carts for the high school. That's 1,000-plus digital devices. They inventoried all of the Chromebooks in both districts, which accounts for about 2,500 devices. They installed new projectors in 30 elementary classrooms across the district. They replaced necessary security cameras across the district. They replaced network wiring and infrastructure in our middle school. They prepped and imaged 26 brand-new computers for new staff members, not including repairs or new devices for existing staff. They rebuilt the print server damaged during some of those electrical storms this summer. They installed 24 smart boards at the Oakland campus. They developed a new technology handbook. They made progress on a comprehensive 100-page incident response plan. They updated and improved electronic conduct reporting across the district, which we'll begin to see in our student information system in Genesys. They also started a knowledge base in the ticket system so that staff are able to access helpful articles in terms of basic troubleshooting, process updates, and how-tos. They built auto rosters to export staff to various systems in order to make sure that staff have access to their students as well as their own personal information. In preparation for the new curriculum platform that we are launching this year, they organized a tech office and removed equipment taking up precious educational space across our schools. And they ran open summer hours for any available staff and did staff trainings weekly and had some productive conversations used in order to provide better customer service. And so when we think about the tremendous efforts, there are a few additional items that are also coming down the pipeline. They will finalize their incident response plan. This is in the event that there is a data breach, theft of protections for both students and staff, individuals attempting to hack our systems and lock out our systems, which school districts across the country have been subject to malware and ransomware to the tune of tens of millions of dollars every month. We will also be phasing in multi-factor authentication in order to make sure that our staff members' personal, private information is protected. We will upgrade our firewall to enhance protections for both students and staff. And then based on feedback directly from families over the last year, we are building staff directories in Genesys with pertinent school-based contact information to be more responsive to the growing needs of our community. And so I wanted to publicly thank our technology team. They are always here, they're behind the scenes, and I don't believe that we give them enough credit. And so publicly, I wanted to thank you for the work that you do. I thank them privately, but thanking them privately is not good enough. And finally, we'd like to acknowledge a few back-to-school donations. And so one of the responsibilities of the district office is to leverage relationships throughout the region in order to bring in resources for the school community. And so over the last two years, we've leveraged partnerships and relationships in order to generate a little over $7 million in competitive grants in order to offset some of the challenging budget issues that we have in addition to districts across the state, given the flaws in the current state-level funding formula. We'd also like to recognize and acknowledge Jefferson Health. Prior to the summer, they generously donated 250 backpacks stuffed with headphones and much-needed school supplies. And so we'd like to publicly thank their leadership team for their continued partnership in Collingswood and Oakland. And those backpacks will be distributed to needy students across every school. We'd also like to thank CMI Media Group. They are a global health management media group. And through relationships with their Cherry Hill office, they graciously donated a swath of office supplies and over 30 flat-screen monitors, adapters, and cables to support the workflow of our business office, personnel, payroll, accounts payable, operations, technology, facilities, and finance. Half of the monitors have already been installed. And so special thanks to our tech team again, as well as our Buildings and Grounds crew for picking up and distributing the materials. And thank you again to the leadership team at CMI Media. And finally, we received an extremely generous offer courtesy of one of our Collingswood High School parents and that relationship earlier this summer after the news of the high school's decision to switch to Chromebook carts. And so Collingswood High School administration worked alongside our technology team to secure over 900 slightly-used Chromebooks from the local Red Cross. This tremendous donation will help mitigate homework and access issue for students without the burden of repairs. The plan will have our students to be able to take much-needed digital devices home for the entire year and return in June. This incredible donation was facilitated by Assistant Principal Dan Whalen to help students at the high school who are going through this transition from take-home to carts. And so tonight, the Board of Education will approve the agreement between Collingswood Public Schools and the local organization with the Red Cross to accept the generous donation, including ancillary equipment such as chargers to Collingswood High School. And so we would like to publicly thank the Red Cross, the Collingswood High School parent who helped facilitate this, and Mr. Whalen for this tremendous donation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. There is not a student report tonight because they will be elected when they get back to school. So moving on to Section 10, Business Administrator/Board Secretary Report. Ms. Coleman will present.
Alrighty. Before I jump into the items I have for your approval tonight, just wanted to let you know...
just wanted to let you know that the audit has been complete. It is all done, so it will be submitted to the board. Hopefully, the state doesn't move the deadline. It's usually due December 5th, but as you know, in the last few years, the state, for their own reasons, keeps pushing the deadline because they can't get their own paperwork done. But the audit is done. It is complete. So tonight, you actually have two months' worth of financials. You've got your final June financials, and then you've got the month of July. So you'll be up to date after tonight's board meeting. And I just wanted to thank John Longo and the Buildings and Grounds crew for all their hard work this summer. We had a couple snafus in some of our buildings, like Garfield, but I think we're ready to go. I think we're ready to rock and roll next week and open our, and have our children come back. It was a very busy summer. People think, you know, you work in a school district, you don't, you don't work in the summer, but boy, do we get, we get very busy the day after graduation, straight through to about the middle, middle of next week. And I think we can breathe. But I just wanted to thank them for all their hard work. So in item 10.01 is a listing of the monthly transfers for June and July. Item 10.02 is your Board Secretary Treasurers reports, all your financial statements for those two months. 10.03, your student activities reports for those two months. 10.04 is your food service financial statement. 10.05 is a listing of the purchase orders for the months of July and August. And then 10.06 is a listing of the warrants to be paid. Again, that's for the months of July and August.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Moving on to Section 11, the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee, Mr. Craig will present.
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. Committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Tonight, we're seeking approval on the following items. 11-2 to 11-9 is the Board Secretary's report, as was just presented. 11-10 is the resolution that was mentioned earlier today around authorizing board members to advocate for the referendum. We'll just not read out the entire resolution, but the, therefore be it resolved. The Board hereby authorizes and permits all individual members of the Board to advocate in favor of the September 11th, 2024 Board proposal on behalf of the Board and their private communications, Collingswood residents on their private social media accounts, and/or in any public or private forum. Board members are reminded that they must identify themselves as members of the Board. Their communications in favor of the September 17th, 2024 Board referendum must be accurate, and they cannot compromise the Board in its efforts to seek approval of the bond referendum from the voters. And three, Board members are authorized to seek guidance from the Board solicitor in any communication pursuant to this resolution. 11-11 is a renewal for one year of the lease with Good Shepherd. 11-12 and through 11-14 are updates to standard operating procedures, budget calendars, and process purchasing manuals. 11-15 is the submission to the Department of Education for the IDEA grant. 11-16, annual toilet waiver, annual toilet waivers and temporary facility requests, temporary facility requests for Oakland and the Early Childhood Center. 11-17 is a dual-use of education space request, request for Tatum. 11-18 is the ESEA consolidated grant budget submission to state. 11-19 through 22 are child study, study team support services on an as-needed basis. 11-22 is approval of first children's services to provide mental health services to the district. 11-23 is a contract agreement for athletic busking services for this year. 11-24 through 26 are translation services as needed. 11-27 through 28 are LDTC services as needed. 11-29 is enrollment in the Burlington County Scholastic athletically. 11-30 is the rate for as-needed evaluations for students that attend out-of-district, attendance out-of-district program. 11-31, approving National Employment 360 to provide free to the district employment transition support for students. 11-32, commission of the blind and visually impaired services for the 24, 25 school year. 11-33 through 34 bilingual services as needed. 11-35 is approving the contract to source, approving a contract for sourcing and supervising RBT aid services, which will be at Newby. 11-36, RFP for high-impact tutoring, providing the support for the high school. 11-37 is the Chromebook, or accepting of the Chromebook donation that Dr. McDowell laid in his report. 11-38 is accepting a $9,000 grant for the Special Olympics Unified Champion School Grant. A special thanks from the Board to Angelina Williams for her work organizing this incredible event. We thank her for all of her efforts. 11-39 is disposal of equipment approval. 11-40 through 41 are two shared service agreements. 11-42, All I See is Gold Use of Facility Request. So seeking approval for items 11-2 to 11-42.
Thank you. Motion to approve said items.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from Board members?
I'd like to speak about Resolution 11.10, which is the resolution authorizing Board members to advocate for the referendum. Just listening to some comments today, I think it, something I've struggled with on, on the Board has been that since I've had the privilege of being on this Board, I've been able to see how, I think, sincere and dedicated all my, you know, neighbors here on the Board are in terms of the work that they've been doing for the school Board. And I say that because I think when I hear about, hey, that the, there's no trust. Trust is eroding between folks and the school Board. To me, I don't really know how to address that because, for example, I know for many of us, one of the first questions when we heard about the referendum plan that came out of our mouths was, is there a way to avoid closing school buildings? Right? And the answer, we go through it, is no. And I think we've, we've said that multiple times because of all the regulations, because of what the architect has said. The answer is no. And we have said that multiple times. And I still hear outside that folks are saying, well, there's, there's, there's another plan. There has to be another plan. There's gotta be another plan. And from my perspective, it's, it's one of those things where I struggle to, to figure out how to handle that because I'm not really sure how to build trust in the Board when we've been consistent in our answers. And again and again, people say, no, that, that just can't be the answer. So I say this to kind of also go into this resolution, which is the sense that, that, you know, I want to confirm to the public that the work has been done to make sure this resolution is appropriate. The work has been done by the Board's lawyer, and, and they have done an analysis of the cases and of the advisory opinions and of the decisions by the school ethics commission and the administrative judge, judges. I looked into a lot also because, as some members of the public have stated, I did write a letter to the editor, I think, last week. That was published last week. Or, and, or two weeks ago, sorry. And the reason why I looked into it was understand what my, what I could do as, as a Board member, right? And one of the important things to understand is that Board members are not just residents in town. We have a special obligation, right? So to speak as a private citizen, we have to put our, on Board matters. We have to put the disclaimer that we're speaking as private citizens, not as representatives of the Board, because only the Board can speak for the Board, and the Board is whatever the majority of the Board votes for. Or the President can also speak for the Board in certain cases. So when we, when we talk as private citizens, we have to put that disclosure. And we're also still bound by school ethics laws, which say that we cannot compromise the Board even in our private actions. Right? So, so these are the rules that we have to follow because we are Board members. There's a special obligation because we get the privilege to sit up here at the, the Board table. What this resolution says is that because the Board agrees, if it gets passed, that we can advocate for the passage of the bond referendum as Board members, that we can. That's, that's the, that's the basic gist of it. It says the Board has had, made an action. And as a collective whole, which is what the Board is, they voted and they've said, hey, Board members, you can advocate as Board members for the passage of a resolution. And, and that's the gist of it. They don't say anything about spending money because the, the big crux of what a, what a school Board can and can't do in terms of advocating for a referendum is they cannot spend public money to do so, one way or the other, right? This is not about spending public money. This is about saying, as a Board, we've made a decision, and if it's voted and passed, then we're perfectly within the Board's right because the Board has authorized the individual members to go out and speak, speak for it. One, I think, the really important piece is that in kind of the crafting of this resolution is this, this paragraph that our lawyer told us, which was, you know, however, school officials are not completely precluded from promoting the adoption of a proposal or referendum. See Parsipony Troy Hills in 181. In Parsipony Troy Hills, the Supreme Court noted that, quote, "When the program represents the body's judgment of what is required in the effective discharge of its responsibility, it is not only the right, but perhaps the duty of the body to endeavor to secure the assent of voters fair too." So, so essentially, what it's saying is that if we pass this action, we are, then, we are allowed to, and we think that it's right, then we are allowed to advocate for the passage of the referendum. What this resolution essentially does is say, you don't, as Board members anymore, have to go out and say that you're not speaking for the Board because you've been authorized then to speak for the Board on this matter. But again, as individuals, we're still held to the School Ethics Act, which means we cannot compromise the Board. And none of us are the Board. The majority of us are the Board, right? And so that's why specifically, we can go out and advocate if this is passed, but we cannot go out and say, vote no, because that would be compromising the Board. Because again, none of us are the Board. The majority of us are the Board. Does that, does that help kind of answer some of those questions?
I think so, yeah.
So I, I say this, I gave my first story also because I think, for me, I'm in support of this resolution because I think one of the concerns that Board members have had in terms of speaking out and, and just trying to build that trust and, and putting the facts out there has been having to continually put that disclaimer out there and worry about whether or not we are speaking with authority of the Board or not on these matters. You know, I, I used to be a teacher, and I'm, I'm still now a sports team coach and something, you know, as frustrating as it is sometimes, you know, sometimes you have to say something 12 times, 24 times, 30 times, right, in a row? Because, you know, people, it, it takes a while. You have to repeat things over and over again for folks to hear and process and understand and come to terms with the answer. And that's just natural human behavior. And so that's why I'm in favor of this resolution because it will make it easier for us Board members to go out and build that trust and, and answer these questions, even if it has to be 30 times, 40 times, 50 times, to make sure that we're clear to the public about what our proposed referendum is and is not.
Any other questions or comments from Board members?
I have a question on item 11.13, the budget calendar. Is it possible, when the Board is being asked to vote on the budget, and I appreciate there's a lot that goes into, you know, specifically at the end of February, the state aid, you know, and I do know all about that, but since there will be steps to kind of get the minds around the, the, the needs of the district going forward, even before that state aid comes out, is it possible for Board members to be given maybe a little bit more information at the time they're being asked to vote to approve that number of what the impact will be on staffing and programming? Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Sorry, taking notes at the same time. Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs., Mrs. Meisner here. Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes, except for 11.10 where I vote no.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, for all applicable items.
Mr. Docus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 12, the Curriculum Committee, Mr. Chu will present.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. So up for approval today is our items 12.02 and 12.03, which are both out-of-district placements and home instruction placements. Item 12.04 is the 2024, 25 district curriculum for the high school. 12, let's see, 12.05 is a district curriculum for the middle school. 12.06 is district curriculum for the preschool and elementary school. The 12.07 is a re-up of our comprehensive equity plan, which is an annual submission. 12.08 is the annual required submission of emergency virtual or remote instruction plan, knock on wood. 12.09 is the 24, 27 ESLIP program submission. 12.10 is the tuition-free students, which is a part of our staff contracts. 12.11 is the approval. So I'm seeking approval for agenda items 12.02 through 12.10.
Motion to approve said items.
So moved.
And a second? Questions or comments from Board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
She's absent at the moment.
Okay. Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, on all applicable items.
Mr. Docus?
Yes, except for required to abstain.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes. Section 13 is the Personnel Committee. Ms. Sheridan, Celia will present.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. This evening, I'm seeking approval for agenda items 13.02 through 13.70. 13.02 is a retirement. Now, 13.03 through 13.16 are staff resignations. 13.17 are lateral movements on the guide issuing of revised contracts. 13.18 is a secretary transfer. 13.19 through, agenda item 13.23 are various leaves. 13.24 through 13.45 are issuing contracts to staff and faculty for the upcoming school year. I'm sorry, 13.44. 13.45 are the appointment of elementary lunch aids. 13.46, social work interns for this year. 13.47, approving student-teacher placement observations for speech-language practicums. 13.48 is the appointment of a Sharp family liaison. 13.49, interpreting service, interpreting services. 13.50 is a contract for, or, I'm sorry, the appointment of CST stipends. 13.51, culture and climate grant stipends. 13.52, high school non-athletic extra-duty pay stipends. 13.53 is the 24, 25 high school athletic head coaching EDP stipends. 13.54, high school athletic assistant and volunteer coaching stipends. 13.55, middle school athletic assistant and volunteer coaching stipends. 13.56, assistant athletic director stipends. 13.57, athletic event personnel appointments. There's a couple pages of those. 13.58, Saturday school detention duty. 13.59, intra-district staff transfers. 13.60 are administrative transfers. 13.62, the student voice training, student voice training for students. I think already happened, correct? Yes. Oh, not yet? Oh, it's tomorrow, I'm sorry. 13.63, curriculum development projects. 13.64, additional curriculum development projects for gifted and talented. 13.65 are force, course overload appointments. 13.66, move on the, Reading Horizons training happened earlier... 13.66, move on, the reading horizons training happened earlier in the summer. 13.67, summer nurses. 13.68, several volunteers for AED training. 13.63, I'm sorry, 69, a list of substitutes and tutors. And 13.70 is the approval of a travel expense form. So, agenda item 13.71, I'm seeking approval for items 13.02 through 13.70.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Celia. Second? Questions or comments from board members?
I was going to mention that, looking through the hiring of the, you know, I'm happy to be able to approve all these new hires for the district. And also, you know, sad to see the departures of the staff who have decided to move elsewhere. Something I want to note, I mean, it's pretty, actually amazing, we're able to hire teachers coming in with, two teachers coming in with 11 years of experience, one coming in with 10, one coming in with 18. Looks like there are three coming with 20-plus years of experience, one coming with 17 years of experience, one coming with 16 years of experience, a few with five years' experience. It is pretty amazing and I'm pretty grateful that we've been able to hire such experienced teachers and then that those teachers decide to leave their districts to join our district at that level of experience. I also, you know, I think, also just to be clear, I think it was mentioned that, you know, in last spring, we unfortunately, because of budgetary issues, had to part ways with about 20 staff, including three administrators. And one of the pieces there that I think we have to reiterate is that the board doesn't really have the choice about who we have to part ways with because of tenure rules for both staff and administrators. And so just kind of reiterating something we reiterated back then was that that was in no way, you know, a judgment on those professionals' abilities or what work and what amazing work they had provided for the district. I know we heard at length during that time that there are some amazing, amazing teachers and staff that we were having to part ways with, who were new to the district and younger in their tenure with the district. And I think just again, acknowledging that, you know, both that they, you know, the parting ways has nothing to do with their, what they've given to the district, but that in many ways our hands are tied because of tenure rules when it comes to that work. But again, really quite grateful that we're able to find such experienced teachers to come join our staff here.
So really quick, just in response to that, and so in 2021, we made a pretty significant change in terms of staffing. For the 10 to some odd years prior to 2021, we made a decision as a district, we did not honor years of experience beyond a certain capacity. And so if you had a 20, 25-year veteran that wanted to come, they would have to come without being honored for their 20 to 25 years of experience. And so we made a decision, both as a board and as a district, to honor the lived and documented experience of professionals when they came in. And what that has translated into, just in the last two years, kindergarten, for those who are kindergarten teachers, that is truly God's work. I could not do it. We were very fortunate to bring in, over the last two years, three extremely masterful, master-level teachers, one with 17 years' experience, one with 23, and one with 29. They replaced first and second-year teachers who were really tasked and challenged in that environment. And so bringing in experienced professionals is truly a benefit to our district. And what you are seeing is that folks are coming to our district because they believe in the vision that has been projected within our district. And so my hat's off to all of our administrators. Our administrators have been working around the clock in order to fill vacancies. They make phone calls into the wee hours of the evening. They have been tracking down candidates that they've talked to, both past and present, in order to make sure that every classroom has a certified teacher in September. So I just wanted to give my administrators just their flowers as well.
Yeah, thank you.
And roll call, please.
Real quick before a roll call?
Sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback off of everyone. As a former music teacher myself, wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Woodward, who will be joining us, or has joined us, as the director of the marching band. On a personal level, I know his family well. Back in 2001, when I started in Lindenwald as a music teacher, was charged with building up the music program for the district there as elementary music teacher and assistant band director at the high school, and worked very closely with his wife, Leslie, who hired me for the position. And so the whole family is just incredibly dedicated to music and marching bands. And so I'm real excited that he's joining us here. And just speaking to what Dr. McDowell and Roger had said in terms of the experience, I know a lot of the community was concerned about having someone coming, green, and their ability to hit the ground running this late in the summer. So kudos again to everybody for bringing him into our district. I was very excited to see that.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulkey.
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer.
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mr. Docus.
Yes, except for required to abstain.
Mrs. Kayden.
Yes. Section 14 is the Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee. Ms. Seltzer will present.
The Policy and Regulations Committee reviews all and updates and changes of district policies and regulations. We have several items that are up for a first read, regulations. They only require one read, and they're outlined here. Most of them are fairly boilerplate updates to these existing regulations. A couple I just wanted to note, 2423, which is about bilingual education, that is the overall plan for what schools have to do for multilingual learners. And it just so happens that tonight, 12.09 is the actual plan, the LIEP, the Language Instruction and Education Program. So that was approved tonight. So if you are interested, like I am, in reading about those things, it is there for your reading. And also to note that 5600, Student Code of Conduct Restorative Practices, that is the regulation to the policy that we updated and approved last spring. So these are items that have been part of the conversation. Others are more general updates. But I put 14.03, approval of items 14.02.
Thank you, Ms. Seltzer. Motion to approve said item. And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? I just wanted to say that I know with the Student Code of Conduct, we talked about in the committee, that the regulation is only one piece of it, right? That there needs to be a student-facing portion to it and that that will be rolled out throughout the beginning of the school year in many different ways to make it very digestible for both students and staff, because some of the changes are pretty different and making sure that everybody understands where we're coming from with it and what it looks like in practice. So just wanted to mention that. Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Mr. Chu. Somebody needs to turn theirs off.
Okay, there you go. Yes.
Only two at a time. Yes, okay. Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulkey.
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer.
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes, except required to abstain.
Mr. Docus.
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden.
Yes. Section 15 is miscellaneous. 15.01 is the adoption of, or the approval of, the HIB report from the June 2024 board meeting. And 15.02 is a job description that is really combining two administrative assistant roles into one for a school secretary and a grant secretary. That person already exists and has been moved to the high school, and we approved that in the personnel section, but we needed to write a job description that would match that. So that's what that 15.02 is. So we need a motion to approve 15.01 to 15.02 this evening. And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please. Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulkey.
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer.
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes.
Mr. Docus.
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden.
Yes. This brings us to section 16, which is our second opportunity for public participation. The public is reminded that all attempts to, that, excuse me, attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. If appropriate clarifying comments will be made after public comment for more detailed responses, communication may go out later in the week or be may discussed during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. There is a three-minute time limit. Ms. Coleman has her timer out. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Maggie Jamiewski, 258 Woodlawn Avenue. I wanted to give the BOE a few examples of why there is some distrust towards some of the people sitting before me. Multiple private meetings were held with community members in their houses with details of the referendum. A Tana mom had an entire info session at her house before school let out, before the plans of this particular referendum were shared outside the ad hoc committee. BOE members had conversations with Sharp parents and were told to keep the details between that certain group of people. The All-In for Collingswood branding is the same as the BOE referendum branding. And as Ms. Seltzer said when asked why, that these have no copyright, so it's acceptable. Please do not give us your sob story of why you don't understand why we distrust all of you.
Hi, Cara Boiler, 90 Summerfield Avenue. I'm totally unrelated to anything on the agenda. I hope this is okay for this portion. Okay, so at the, one of the Q and As, I mentioned to Dr. McDowell that we had received a donation. I could not find the email, so is it okay if I share the descriptor of the donation for the PTAs? It was from the, one of the preschools in town? I don't know if you remember it. Okay, so I had mentioned that we, Kaleidoscope Preschool that was in town had closed down. They actually, in closing out their budget for the end of the school year, they made a very generous donation to each of the elementary school PTAs. I believe that the number was $5,000 per elementary school, and the number was to be used for teacher supplies specifically. So I just wanted to acknowledge Kaleidoscope Preschool and thank them for their donation. And hopefully we'll be able to, I can find some official documentation to let you guys know that it occurred. Thank you.
I was going to say.
Hi, I'm Tom Howard again, 16 Fraser Avenue. I just wanted to bring up something, I don't know if, probably nobody remembers, I brought up a couple months ago at a meeting. And it's just a request that, if possible, the board agenda can be published earlier than the morning of the day of the meeting. There are many people who work, you know, all day and get home five, six o'clock, who might like to come to the meeting, whose lives are definitely affected by what you guys discuss, and who would like to, I'm sure, have some information available ahead of time. So if they would want to come and give you feedback and speak, having that in a few days in advance, again, if possible, would be really helpful. For example, the district I work in, there is a meeting, board meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, and the agenda has already been out for four days since before the weekend. And that's a regular practice in my district. And that helps community members and everybody just really know what's going on. And so you can come to the meeting and, you know, share your thoughts. And especially if something is very, you know, directly impactful for that particular family, that particular community, it's really nice to have that information ahead of time. And again, like I said, you know, it's really hard to be, come to this meeting, one, informed if, you know, you're at work all day and you can't have access to, you know, a computer to, or just have the time to read through the agenda, you know, when you're working. And then to expect to come home when you might be picking up kids or trying to get food ready for your family, to actually, you know, come here with some semblance of an idea of what is happening. So if there's any way you could publish the agenda earlier, I think it would be helpful to many in the community. And it would help also, again, address that issue of transparency and trust, which I know you guys tried your best to do, you know, due diligence to inform people. And I don't think there's any kind of nefarious, you know, reason why you publish, it's published, you know, only the day of, but it would help address those concerns as well. Thanks.
Hi there. Alexandra Guido Smith, again, 311 Lakeview Drive. I just want to address the previous comment about putting things out and how some things may be mistaken for looking like it came from the board. Because people who've come up to speak have actually shared things that looked like it came from the board, when in reality, I'm talking on Facebook, maybe, people set things out, actually, I think it is pretty nefarious to set up something on the same heading, same font, same picture, same color, same everything, as what you put out on the board to say, to highlight something that you aren't actually advertising. And then when people are brought, when that's brought to their attention, they say, oh, sorry, I don't know where I got this from, just passing it on, just good information. So I can see how that happens, and I don't necessarily think that it is a totally nefarious thing unless, you know, the motivation of the person that is either making it or sharing it. Thank you.
Hi, Robin Bonfield, 714 McGill. I wanted to thank you for the marching band. It means everything to me that my kid is able to do that, so thank you very much. Also, just wanted to say, I hope that there is a plan to bring this community back together, especially the people that really do actually care about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and all of our kids, and all of our community voices being heard, because right now it's being ripped apart, and some of that is under your heading, whether y'all are saying it or not. It's disgusting, and I really hope that you will address the community in how to speak to each other, because it's enough. Our kids aren't getting anything out of this. And we need to be putting our attention onto bigger things. I want to be talking to people about November, not September, right? But anybody I've talked to in the Sharp neighborhood, like the whole Crestwood Apartments, one person heard about it, including people who have kids in our schools. One. Many people have grandkids. I think people who've heard something about it don't realize that it would close Sharp. And that in and of itself, and the fact that so many people in the Sharp neighborhood didn't know anything about this, how could their voice be heard? How is there good community organizing if the community doesn't know about it? So I just wanted to put that out there and just really hope that no matter what happens, we can move forward and listen to the voices of people impacted, because they don't have a choice, many of us don't have a choice, to send our kids someplace else.
Sorry, it's a long one from the back. Hello again, Dave Rautzen, 903 Park Avenue. A couple of questions. I noticed both on the tennis courts here and outside of Garfield, there are banners with regard to the referendum. There's no identification on the banners. Is it safe to assume that the board and/or the district did not pay for those banners? Okay. Did the board give permission for those banners to be hung up? Is that not in violation of either board policy or a prohibition against political advertising on public property?
We did it last time, too, yeah.
I mean, I, I'm sorry?
We think we did this in the last referendum also, but yeah.
Fine. Well, nonetheless, I mean, certainly anybody who is not against the referendum, or who is not in favor of the referendum pays taxes for these things. So, that's fine, and as you just mentioned, and for anybody who doesn't know, I think some of you do know, was my pleasure to spend six years on the board, so I truly, truly understand how difficult your job is, how oftentimes it's thankless. I certainly, certainly get it, I understand that. With that said, and it's been mentioned a few times tonight about our staff and our faculty, how wonderful they are, how much they contribute to our children, et cetera, et cetera. It's just, it's beyond me how there's, it's, there's no contract yet. I just, I cannot understand it. I think I, you know, we went through two, at least two contract cycles, I think, in my time. It took three meetings with the CEA to get it done. And I'm not going to pretend I know the issues, because I don't, you know, as they should be, they should be between you and the CEA, this should not be litigated in public, et cetera. But, please, get these people, I mean, it's unbelievable to me that the school, you know, the school year's starting, and there's no contract yet. And somebody mentioned before how demoralizing it must be. Dr. McDowell, and it's great that we're getting experienced teachers in, but my understanding is we've also lost a lot, and they're leaving because of morale issues and things along those lines. So, please, to the best of your ability, get our teachers under a contract that works for everybody. Thank you.
So, I'm going to ask Ms. Coleman if she would speak to the issue of when we can, when it's most appropriate to post the agenda with the most accurate information that we can give the public.
Okay, so, there is no requirement that we post our agenda. Just that we have to let the public know when our meetings are going to be. Now, we post our agendas midnight the night before. I would absolutely love the idea to get our agendas out earlier, but when I tell you the flurry of agenda items that come flying into the board office, because again, like, we've been hiring like crazy, as you can see on the agenda, it was like seventy personnel items, these things are coming in fast and furious, and what can I tell you, we were still adding items to this agenda on Friday, trying, like, if we have a teacher, you know, like a math teacher, want to hire them, you know, we got to get the paperwork in, we were adding stuff as, until Friday. So, I love the idea of doing it earlier, but that would have to, administratively, we'd have to figure that out, because right now, like, I had to turn away some agenda items today that I got from some administrators, and I said, the agenda's live, folks, like, can't do it.
Right, because we can't add.
Because I would also deal with trust and lack of faith in the community if I'm adding something to the agenda at the last minute, like, if you looked at the agenda on Friday and then came to the board meeting and I added ten things, you're going to be like, what is this lady up to? So, we got to kind of figure out that balance. But we do post at midnight the night before, I make all of the attachments, you know, a lot of school districts don't, they may have a generic agenda item, but not like all the attachments aren't able to be read. Once we go live, you can read everything that the board has up here, all the public documents. So, we can talk about it in committee, but yeah, we would have to figure that out administratively, because that would, we'd really have to get all of us on board that now the administrators, because we meet in committees the week before the board meeting, so the board meeting obviously is Monday, so last week we're meeting on Monday and Wednesday in committees to discuss all these items as we're continuing to add them, so we have to factor all of that in. So, yeah.
Could we put something, like a comment or something on there, that the agenda is still subject to change until the start of the meeting, just knowing that there will be things that have to be taken off or added, so that after committee meetings or something, even if we had it out before the weekend before, or is that?
I'd want to check with the attorney.
Sure.
Just because, like, when I say live, like, as board members, you can log in at any time and see the agenda as it's being crafted, and read the documents, and, you know, see when I'm adding and pulling things, but I don't know if, I don't know. Like, once I hit public, I want to say that that's it, which is kind of what I did today to some, at least two administrators that I know of, told them, you know, too bad, you don't have to wait till September, so.
Right, so it's going to have to be a discussion about balancing, getting information out to the public sooner, without doing things like not being able, like, having to wait a whole other month to hire teachers that we'd like to hire now, or things like, things like that, right? So, that's something that we can discuss. I just wanted to reiterate one more time, any of the banners that you're seeing outside of schools, or the videos that have been taken, all of those things have been, have come from the firm that, our architectural firm, who we have worked with before many, for many years now, all of those things are coming from them. Sure, we're giving permission to let them post on our website, post on our Facebook page, hang things on our schools, but that's not coming from our annual budget, and that's built into a referendum, as it is for every referendum that I've known of. We went to the NJ SBA workshop that talked about this as a best practice, it's what got Cherry Hill's largest bond referendum ever passed, to go through, so that's that piece of it. And I'm just going to end tonight reminding folks that you're, as cliche as it is, your vote is your voice. So, everyone gets a chance to let us know what you think on September seventeenth, and there is a lot of information out there on our website to give you all the information that you need. There are frequently asked questions that you can look through, that we try to update, there are more roundtable sessions, you can email the board contact information and ask more questions, and we will get back to you with answers. So, we hope that you will take advantage of all of those things to educate yourself more on what we believe is a project that will benefit the community, and will be the first real investment in our school facilities in many, many years, and I think that's a worthwhile cause. With that being said, let's.
Can I add just one thing? As someone, I'm a public school teacher, and I've been a part of a referendum in my district as well, and if anything, I think we have given in this district a wealth more of information earlier than most school districts do. This was rolled out in March to the public, and every banner and everything that has been paid for, that has been paid for by the architectural firm, it's the same firm that was used in Cherry Hill, it's the same firm that my district used, we had t-shirts handed out to teachers. This is a very common practice, there's nothing nefarious about it, this is just how school referendums work. And I think it's important to note that. I don't, I think that we've had more than enough information out there, and you do get to have a say in it, you get to have a say in it on September seventeenth. This is how school referendums work.
Section seventeen, motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.